Hammond City Council.
Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, August 22nd, 2023, 5:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye. Present, I'm sorry.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Public hearing, old business number one.
An ordinance to approve a request by Mimi McKee Catharole owner to rezone 207 South Holly Street, per survey by Clifford Webb dated 2/21/1962, from RM-2 to MX-C with the allowed use of light industrial prohibited District 2, Lacey Landrum.
This is a case that was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission back in June. We had to delay it due to some traveling that was done by Ms. Mimi. She is here tonight to speak about her case. What she is looking to do is at this address of 207 South Holly, which is in District 2, she's looking to rezone from RM2 to MXC. They did, through the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, reserve that they would not do any of the light industrial uses and perhaps even some other uses as well, but light industrial was the one that was actually prohibited. It is in the Iowa Edition overlay. And on one side, on the north side, there's one single-family residence, which is in RM2. To the east, and there's also the first guaranteed parking lot. If you look at the zoning map, it actually shows how this is kind of surrounded in a lot of ways by MXC. So MXC kind of makes a backwards C across this property and the one that's just north of it and the one that's just south of it. The one that's south of it is actually a vacant lot. This one that's to the north of it has a home, as you'll see in the photos. This was unanimously approved by the Planning and Zoning Commissioners. There was one Commissioner absent, but four of them did vote in favor of this rezoning. There were four people who spoke out against the project at the zoning hearing, but there were two people there also who spoke in favor of the rezoning.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
It's Mimi McKee Catharle, and the address is 207 South Holly Street. Hammond 70403, I think.
Ms. Catharle, what is the intended use? What plans do you have for the property?
I... Well, at this time, I'm entertaining several things to do with it. I have made no exact decision yet. I'd either like to put a coffee shop or a sandwich shop there, maybe another hair salon, a spa. Not exactly quite sure. Still exploring all my options on the property.
Any business there? I mean, looks like there probably be some parking problems. Is that just from the map?
Currently, well, there's... Currently, I probably... Currently, you can put about three or four cars in the current concrete parking pad that's there. I could always expand it to the edge of the property, and that may fit another two cars in the front. There's also a driveway that I could always park to the back of the property. So I don't know. Plus, there's, you know, it is... There's parking off of 190. So I'm, you know, I don't know, maybe what, 100 feet to... I'm not very good with that, but 100 feet, 200 feet to 190? So it's really not that far if someone wanted to park there, I mean, park there and walk.
To be clear, though, since this is not CBD, which basically says that you are close enough to the main parking malls, that you don't have to supply additional parking onsite, there would still be onsite parking regulations according to the table that's outlined in the UDC. And that all depends on what type of business is going there. So we would be having those conversations as we talk through what the business options are at the location.
And then the two properties to the north and the south, have either of those property owners been anyone who's had any responses?
I think, I believe, if I remember, and I'm sorry, this was back in June, and I don't... They did not submit any written responses, but I believe in the minutes of that meeting, the property owner to the north was there, and she was opposed to it.
Is that Carol?
I believe so.
Okay.
And then I don't think anybody was there representing the property to the south, but as I stated before, that's a vacant lot, so that may have been why they were not. Everyone in this area, though, did receive letters as adjacent property owners, so they knew it was going both through Planning and Zoning, and they knew that it was going through the city council as well.
Okay.
So they received two rounds of letters.
The one that's to the left of me is owned by Bill Thompson, the electrician. And he owns the entire half of the block in front of me. And he owns the home beside... The vacant lot beside me. So I know, you know, he's always been pro-business. And he's been a businessman in Hammond for at least 100... He and his family, at least 100 years. So they're not, you know...
If I remember correctly, he was at the last city council meeting, and he did speak about his concerns being parking. But again, that would determine... That could all depend on what type of business it is. And whatever is eligible in terms of parking spaces, that would maybe limit what businesses could go there.
Right.
Is anyone else from the public want to address this item? Step up to the mic, please. Give us your name and address.
My name is Alton Lewis. I'm here with First County Bank. And first of all, I'd like to note that this came up a few months ago, and we were here, and it was removed from the agenda for some reason, okay? Mr. Thompson was here, objecting. Other neighbors were here, objecting. We were all here, objecting. And it was removed. There've been no signs posted that it was coming up for tonight. I may be... I may not understand how things are supposed to be done. But my understanding was, if someone's requesting a change, they have to put signs out saying so that it will all know. There were none this time. Now... The space she's talking about is a 50 or 60-foot wide lot. There's no parking except in the front of that lot. In her prior deal, and I have no idea what she's saying now, she's going to put a restaurant, you know, a bar, all kind of stuff in there with no parking. So where was the parking going to be? First County Bank, her neighbors, whatever. So we strongly object to what she's trying to do. Number one, because we don't think she's complied with what she was supposed to do, which there should have been signs out front telling all the neighbors that there was going to be a hearing tonight. There were not. Number two... There's no provision for parking other than on other people's properties. So we are here objecting and make that sure. I was here before. The meeting was canceled because my understanding was she had it pulled from the agenda. Mr. Thompson was here. The other neighbor was here. We were all here. It was pulled from the agenda. Tonight, it's back on the agenda, but no notice is given to anybody.
Thank you.
I've received some... Just some conversations with people in the neighborhood who are concerned about the parking and a lack of plan, and it has the Iowa District overlay, which the intent is to protect single-family homes. I think parking is obviously an issue, and I know that would be addressed. My bigger concern is the fact that you have two residential properties on each side. And so we're about to... If we do this, then all of a sudden, these people are going to be changing. And I mean, it's a big concern to me that your neighborhood to the north is opposed to it. So that's just my thoughts, and that's the feedback that I've received.
Lacey, so in this process, again, while being removed and being placed back on the agenda, the notifications and the signs, would they have to go back out again?
I just had a conversation with that side of the table because we don't... So Planning and Zoning handles the first round of notices for their meetings, and then the council clerk handles the second round. And we did notices for the first time this was on the agenda. We did not do them for this time. So I think the city attorney may have a recommendation on this.
I think the council certainly wants to be sure all the residents have gotten notice of the meeting. So if you're not satisfied that adequate notice has been out to the residents, my recommendation is that you table the item, be sure the notices are put back, and then have another public hearing and another consideration of final adoption.
I like that recommendation right there. So I'd like to...
What we can do is, at this point, we're in a public hearing, so we can let... Allow other public comments. When it comes time for final adoption, then you could make a motion to table it.
Okay.
I do have one question. And that is, when you look at the city master plan, my street... My address was included in being mixed-use commercial, and this is something that the city of Hammond approved? I would like you guys to take a look at that and keep that in mind, that this was already prior to your master plan to be in its future development to be mixed-use commercial.
Okay.
I'm okay with, you know, if we table it till the next time. Just, it cannot be in September because I must be in Atlanta for the month. So if we can do this in October, I'd appreciate it. All right, thank you.
And Council President, I'd recommend it come back up for a public hearing, not just for final adopts. Have another public hearing. Reset for public hearing and final adoption.
Okay, all right.
If we could be sure that we agree on a date with you well in advance.
Yeah.
That way, we have time to get the notices and the signage out. I think this one kind of came, you know, quick on the...
Okay, that's fine. I have no problem. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public on this item? Hammond City Council, regular session agenda, August 22nd, 2023, 5:42 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Divatario.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Here.
I'd like you to please stand for our prayer.
Eternal Father, we thank you on this evening. We give you glory, we give you honor and praise that is due in your name. Father God, just thanking you for who you are. Asking you to continue to cover us, continue to guide us, and continue to keep us and protect us from all hurt, harm, and danger. Father, if that's the time we need you, we need you to step in right now. Continue to move in our homes and our neighborhoods and our schools and in our streets right now. Continue to cover our city. Continue to cover our administration. Continue to cover the council. Continue to cover each district that they serve right now. Father God, we lift you up right now. Just giving you praise, giving you honor, and giving you thanks right now for who you are. We thank you that everything will be done decent, order-pleasing in your sight, where you will get all glory, all honor, and all praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I ask at this time that all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda, approval of our August 8, 2023 meeting, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Final adoption of ordinance, old business. I make a motion to reset this item for a public hearing and adoption.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Introduction of ordinance, item number one.
An introduction... I'm sorry, an ordinance to declare the intention to obtain full ownership of property adjudicated to the city of Hammond, located at 118 West Louisa Street under LSARS 472236, authorizing the sale of the property to the adjoining landowner pursuant to LSARS 472202 and providing for related matters.
Council, the city had this vacant lot at 118 West Louisa Street, adjudicated for unpaid taxes. That was years ago. Since then, the adjoining owner, Mr. Carter, has maintained that property. So under Louisiana law, there's a provision for the city to take ownership of it and then transfer it to the adjoining owner, who's maintained the lot for more than a year without a public sale. There is a process still to go through where even if you were to approve the ordinance, the tax debtor would have to get notice with an opportunity to redeem the property, which would be for well more than the appraised value, but would still have that opportunity to redeem the property. So this is just the beginning of a process that allows the city to state its interest to take ownership, but then to sell it to the adjoining owner if it's not redeemed. So this is just the introduction. I can answer any questions today or at the public hearing next week and when it comes up for final adoption.
Andre, I have a question about this. Giving notice to the tax debtor in a normal tax deed issue, a lot of times, the person's deceased, and then you have problems, you know, finding out how to notice them and everything. Do we know whether that would be an issue, or we have any way to work around that issue?
I'm not anticipating that to be an issue, but we will certainly provide for that in the process.
And if we do have to deal with that and say an unopened succession, is the city going to pay for the cost of doing these things?
No, we're only required to give notice as the name appears on the tax rolls of the city. We could send the notice if there's public record of a succession. We would send notice to whoever's on the public record.
Anyone else have any questions on this item?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Andre. This is in District 3, and I want to thank the administration, and you too, Mr. Andre, for putting this on. Mr. Carter been maintaining this property for over 20 years. And that's the best thing about it. When you find a neighbor that willing to cut property or keep it clean, from the trees to everything, he kept the lot clean for over 20 years. And we do have it on record that he did do that. But I want to thank the administration for me even considering this and putting this on the agenda. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else? Thank you, Andre. Got to make a motion to introduce this ordinance.
Thank you.
You made a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Introduction number two.
Introduction of an ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use request by Tasha Dameron for the location of 307 North Oak Street, zoned RM-3, to allow the use of real estate office. Expanded conditional use contingent on, one, this is a personal right and expires upon the change in ownership of the property from the person originally granted the conditional use, and it meets all the requirements in the Unified Development Code. This property is in District 2, Lacey Landrum.
As explained, this property is in District 2. This is kind of a unique case. The business that is in the present... There's actually a business in the present location. They are looking to sell their site. That business has been open since 1992. So that's why it's in an RM2 zoned for normal residential use, but it is a business because it was in that location before they went and kind of fitted the zoning as it would go. And instead of spot zoning this one parcel, they decided to zone all the parcels the same. The best fit for this... Tasha Dameron has indicated that she does not intend to have a lot of drive-through clients. It would all be by appointment. So at most, there might be one or two vehicles there to look at a space or to meet with her, to sign documents, those kinds of things. So there wouldn't be necessarily a parking challenge there. There is also, to the north, this is an apartment building. To the south of it is actually another long-term business. Go Jobs is there for Tangipho Workforce Development. Has been in that location a long time. And then there's a single-family home to the west of it. And then across the street is actually all mixed MXC. So it's mixed commercial. So this is a unique space right there. And as you can see in the map, that's why instead of rezoning the parcel as a whole, we're looking at that expanded use so that she would be able to have her real estate business here, but only she could operate that. If she sold this parcel later to somebody else, they would have to come back to request that. Otherwise, it would go back to residential use. This was unanimously approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their August meeting. One of the commissioners was absent. For this application was both Tasha Dameron, the applicant, and Terry Gray, a Realtor. And then there was no one opposed to it. And we've received no oppositional comments.
Anyone else from the public on this item? Anyone else on the council have any questions? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion, introduce.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Resolution number one.
A resolution to reappoint George Bergeron to represent the Police Department on the Hammond Municipal Fire and Police Service Board for a three-year term from July 29, 2023 to July 29, 2026. Chief Edwin Bergeron.
An election was held at Hammond Police Department, and Lieutenant Bergeron was selected as the civil service representative for the next three years. This is something that's required by law that we go through. We hold an election, and then it must be confirmed by y'all.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this item? Can Bergeron have anything you'd like to say? Anyone from the council? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye. Aye.
Resolution number two.
A resolution to reappoint John Philip Natarino to represent the Fire Department on the Hammond Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board for a three-year term from July 29, 2023 to July 29, 2026. Chief Daniel Fokes.
Good evening. It's Natarino. Oh. So he's... He served the previous three years, and he was elected by popular vote from our firefighters. So just asking y'all's approval for him to serve another three years.
Is he in here tonight?
I don't think so.
Anyone else from the public on this item? Anyone else from the council? Pleasure to the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Of staying.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Resolution number three.
A resolution to approve Why Not Pizza, located at 14175 Highway 190 West, Hammond, Louisiana 70401, to obtain an alcohol permit, excuse me, for a restaurant. The owner is Why Not Pizza LLC, Casey Daigle.
Good afternoon. We come for y'all this afternoon for an onsite restaurant alcohol permit for Why Not Pizza. This is in the old Shorty's Ribs building and restaurant. It's just a name change and a new business, a new restaurant there. Mr. Orland Rogers is here if y'all have any questions for him.
Anyone from the public have a question on this item?
Mr. Orland's here. Come on up. How you doing, Mr. Orland?
I ain't hear very good. I may have to come down there.
Hey, no, that's good. What kind of place is this going to be?
I can't hear very good, so I'll get right here right here.
What kind of place is this going to be? What kind of place will this be? What kind of place is this going to be? A restaurant or...
A what?
Is it going to be a restaurant?
Yeah.
Okay. Same. It's going to be a pizza place, a pizza house, pizza restaurant.
Pizza.
A Pizza Hut? Okay, all right. Food and drink, food and alcohol? Food and alcohol? Food and alcohol?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I'm good, yeah.
Any more questions?
Nope, you're good.
I can't hear very good.
Yeah, you're good. You're good.
Thank you.
That's it. I don't have any, that's it.
All right.
All right, you can have a seat.
Watch your step.
Yeah. All right. Anyone else from the public on this matter? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
And Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, Casey.
Resolution number four.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Leon... I'm sorry, with Lion Environmental LLC to serve as the city's laboratory compliance manager for an amount of $54,360 annually. The contract period will be from sub- The contract period will be from September first, twenty-twenty-three until August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, with an option to renew two additional twelve-month periods at same terms and conditions. Contract not to exceed thirty-six months. Guy Palermo.
This is Lion Environmental. They've been doing the lab work since twenty-twenty and we just renewing their contract. Everything stayed the same, no changes.
Anyone from the public have a question on this item? Step to the mic, give us your name and address, please.
South Nicholas, thirty-six oh seven Highway one ninety west, Hammond, Louisiana. My only question is, this company, Lion Environmental? Do y'all know who owns the company, the corporation or whatever, LLC? What is it, LLC? Yeah, I'm sorry? You know, do y'all, does the council know Mason Levy?
No.
Nathan.
No, but they're on a bad.
Huh? Nathan or Mason?
Nathan.
Nathan.
Anybody else in the council? Nobody knows these people?
City knows.
I'm a little bit concerned because what's happening to me is that, you know, these, these projects are being put out. But a lot of times the city, I mean, they're not notifying the people or even the council who owns those businesses or whatever, or who else is involved in that business. I mean, I'm just trying to understand what is the rules of the city of Hammond? Are they supposed to just, you know, whoever wants to put up a bid or put out on a, you know, a quarterly bid or what? I mean, you know, let me know. I don't, I don't follow that, you know? I mean, does y'all, do you know, Steve? Does anybody know who these people are?
Well, there's, there's items attached to this.
Well, I don't have that item, so.
It's, it's hyperlinked on the agenda, but my, what I'm trying to say to you is they've been our consultant or contracted services since twenty-twenty, so three years. So Guy, are they doing a good job? You.
So they, they've been.
Nathan Levy, Nathan Levy is a scientist, so this is a professional services contract. He handles all the compliance testing for the sewer treatment plant. He also assisted us in working through our permit renewal for that plant. But we have both monthly and quarterly and annual reports that he completes. And he, we have worked with him for years. He used to work in a different capacity for PACE Analytics and, and did all the chemical side of the testing. And now he's helping us on this side. This is a position that Dr. Patrick Satun had for years and years and years. He was our compliance manager for almost, what, forty years, Guy? And then he retired and we were not able, we had another employee come in, but that employee went to work for another place. This is a position that is so technically specific that it would be difficult to have an actual on-staff employee. We would have to pay them much, much more money rather than hiring a contracted person. And so that's why we're, we're working with Mr. Levy. He's done just a fantastic job. He's helped train our staff. He's helped train the, he also ensures the compliance of the lab itself and the testing that has to go on and the different tools that are in there. They have to be calibrated and they have to meet those standards. He handles all of that for us.
Well, that was really a lot of information. But here again, y'all have the information, but the public doesn't have the information.
It's actually linked on the, I just.
Well, you can't read that anyway, so I don't know why y'all even have it up there, to be honest with you.
Yeah, you may have to scroll in on your phone or.
I beg your pardon?
You may have to scroll in on your, on your phone. I know sometimes it's a little.
I'm ancient, I'm old school, so I don't do that, okay?
Yeah.
But I'm not, I'm not saying that he's not qualified. All I want to know, that's, he's making that fifty-four thousand dollars a year to maintain, apparently, right? So that's why I'm asking the council, are y'all aware of this individual? Or are y'all aware of anyone else who's willing to maybe participate in this? That's why I'm asking the council, not anybody else, really.
I mean, this is the information that was provided back to us. I don't, I know they probably sent it out for bid.
No, they don't bid.
They don't bid this one?
It was professional services.
This is the.
We don't, we don't, we don't put it out to bid. We just assume that he's been working for ten years or twenty years or whatever, or he's qualified in that field. And, and the city's gonna pay him fifty-four thousand a year to maintain for one year. Is that correct?
He is excellent at his job. We've had no complaints from DEQ. We've never had any questions about his work.
Lacey, I'm not denying he's not excellent at it. John, I'm just asking a question. Now, the question I'm asking is, is he the only person available? That's what I'm asking. Okay, you answer my question. Thank you.
Christine Monastery, two zero eight Camilla Avenue, Hammond. Isn't the water department operator supposed to hold a licensing and certification to do water testing? Don't they have to go through a class and be recertified every year? You do, so then why are we independently contracting it out?
This is different from the people who work on the water and sewer system itself. So the state requires level one through four certifications for the actual operators. Guy Palermo is our water and sewer superintendent. He holds all those level four credentials. John Blake also works underneath him. He holds all of his high credentials. And then Vernon is over the treatment lat, the treatment pond and that plant, and he holds all of his credentials. So this is just.
Pay three different people for water testing, for sewer?
No, not for testing, to manage all of those operations. Running a water and sewer system is one of the most difficult things that you can do.
As evidenced by our sewage and water. I got it. I understand. Okay. Thank you.
Guy, how you doing? On this amount, how much did you charge last year?
Same price.
Same price?
Nothing changed. All the services stay the same and the price stay the same.
And how often do we do the samples?
He's here every week, two or three times a week, and he does all the DMRs, does all the paperwork for them. One of them do, when they pull the samples, they pick them up and test them. We do samples five days a week. He handles all the paperwork and stuff for that. The monthly, monthly and quarterly reports, he does all that.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else have a question on this item? If not, pleasure the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you, Guy.
Thanks, Guy.
Resolution number five?
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Roofing Solutions for forty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars to repair the damaged roof at one-two-nine-zero Southwest Avenue Fire Department Headquarters, RFP two-four dash zero nine. Chief Daniel Fokes.
Good evening. This is, this is, we sent this out for bids. We actually had a pretty large limb fell on top of our headquarters building here a few weeks ago. Did some pretty major damage to the panels. So we sent out for, for requests for proposals and we got one, one back. And it was forty-four nine, nine fifty to do the repairs, among a few other things. Just a little history on this. We're actually going to send out for quotes before the tree fell because there's some, some upkeep that we needed to do around there, just some general maintenance as far as the roof and gutters and soffits and things like that were concerned. And then the tree made it a whole other big deal. So this is the, the price that we were able to get for the repair and completion of the other items that we were looking at doing.
I saw in the email you said y'all did make insurance claim?
Yes.
And so they are, did they come out and adjust it yet or?
Yes, they, they came out.
So are they, are they paying for it?
Yes, that, this money is coming out of insurance, that reward.
I know this isn't you, chief, but I wanted to note and thank you guys for putting in there including that you sent it to certain people and then the proof that they didn't do bids so that we can, you know, expedite this conversation that you requested multiple proposals.
Interestingly, I know the roof panels on, on this building are, are unique. So there's not a lot of roofing companies that are able to actually do that kind of work. So we were kind of limited on who we could actually send it out. So we were, we elicited some advice for, from some of the suppliers of that actual roofing material on who could, who could do that work and stuff like that. And we made sure those folks got the, the proposals.
Anyone else have any other questions on this item? Anyone else from the council? Pleasure the council.
Motion to approve? Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number six?
A resolution to authorize the purchase of thirty self-contained breathing apparatus for a total of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-four cents, RFP two-four dash zero eight. Chief Fokes.
So this is, I sent y'all the email. This is essentially what we wear to go inside fires. Basically a self-contained breathing apparatus, air pack or whatever you want to call it. It's the bottle we're on our backs. So we sent out a request for proposal. We got two proposals back. However, one proposal didn't meet the specifications that we actually asked for in the, the bid. So the one that, that did meet all the specs, met our standard of what we need as, as a fire department is two hundred and ninety-five thousand, a little over two hundred and ninety-five thousand, which honestly is a side note. This is a little cheaper than I was expecting and was told. So I'm, I'm thankful for this price. I know it seems like a large sum of money. But this is, this is how we breathe in, inside burning buildings, so it's worth every penny.
Does this come out of your millage?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chief, how many, how many y'all already have already?
So right now, we have about thirty-four, thirty-five. However, they're approaching ten years old.
And when do they expire?
Usually the lifespan of a self-contained breathing apparatus is anywhere from ten to fifteen years. Now, one, one side note with these, large price tag, lifetime warranty. So if a part fails, it's no cost to us to be replaced. Now, damage is a whole nother thing, but a failure, one thing that we're experiencing right now with our SCBAs is a high repair cost because those SCBAs didn't come with a lifetime warranty like these do. So that was one thing that, that we really like about these, actually, they have a warranty. So if, if they fail within that fifteen-year lifespan, those parts are actually taken care of.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else on this item?
I'm not gonna say my name again because I already said it earlier. No, I'm just looking at, he said they own thirty-four right now, thirty-five. I was trying to figure out how many men, like in the case of a fire in Hammond, which is no, no, probably no bigger than, what, two, two stories house, a building in Hammond? I would suggest maybe fifteen more. We're trying to cut the budget a little bit, you know? I'm just asking the council to consider maybe, since they own thirty-four already and the only time they're being used is in, where they have in a really hazardous condition. So I would like to just make, make it a recommendation to the council to maybe just cut it in half. Thank you.
Yeah, I would not recommend that. So right now, we're gonna have, so, so here's how a lot of this works. We're required by property insurance to have a minimum of four on every staffed apparatus, okay? We talked about, I have thirty-four. They're at the end of their lifespan. They're costing us a lot. So those, those air packs that we currently have, we're just gonna, if, if I don't get thirty of these, I'm gonna continue to have to put money into most of those. So we're just gonna continue to spend money to repair those. So I do not recommend dropping it down to fifteen. We need these thirty SCBAs. Again, that, that puts enough on our apparatus to, to meet the property insurance standard. And, you know, you know, moving forward, it's something that we're gonna look at instead of a wholesale replacement every ten, fifteen years, you know? Four, five a year or every couple of years. So we're not in a boat to where I'm having to replace thirty air packs all at once. It's just something that we're having to deal with. It's a, it's a big chunk right now, but we're trying to, to make a plan going forward. That's a little bit smarter than, than having to, you know, do a bulk purchase all at once. So, but again, I don't recommend buying thirty, cutting this in half. It's, we, we have, we're gonna have twenty-two on a shift. So I, I have seen every one of those guys have to have an SCBA at a call. And we have, we have large buildings. We have, you know, several hotel motels that are five stories. I mean, we're, we're growing, so it's, it's something to consider.
Chief, to clarify, you have twenty-two people on a shift. And if you needed everyone to have it, that'd be twenty-two people for a, a large event. And then the bigger point would be the property insurance, which we get, I'm not sure everyone understands this. Property and our property insurance rate are based on our fire protection and the rating we have. And if we're not providing those to, if we're not properly equipping, it could lower our fire insurance rate.
Correct.
Is there anyone else on this item?
From New Hammond, Louisiana. With the chief, the representative for the Fire Department, he's speaking about the repairs. But he didn't give you any numbers about the repairs that he have to do on the equipment that he have now. I think that it should be some type of figures here presented before the board that you can also make a determination saying that if you're spending money unnecessarily on repairs before you spend three hundred thousand dollars.
Now, just looking up on the board here and I see they have two proposals. And why do we come up with two hundred and ninety-five, which is from Premier? And you got Casco, which was two hundred and twelve thousand, you know? So that's like, you know, eighty-some thousand dollar difference. I was just trying to figure out why we don't go with Casco Industries.
The chief said that that, those.
I beg your pardon?
That bid did not meet the specs.
Oh, did not meet specs. Well, that was hidden. That's okay.
Do you have another comment, chief?
No, unless y'all have any more questions.
And, yeah, I have a question. What Art just said, and I didn't say it, but what Art said, it need to be brought to the councilmen from this point on. But we sitting here talking about repairs or anything, give us something to look at because still and all, we know it's millage money, but the money still belongs to the taxpayers. So that was a good point he brought out and I appreciate it. That's why I like the public input because you can learn from people that have more knowledge than you. So I thank you, Mr. Art, and chief, from this point on, I would like to have some numbers to look at because, I mean, we don't know how much damage. No, we don't know how much it's costing or nothing. So you tell us that it's costing a lot to get them repaired. And I know you're trying to save the city money and that helps out a lot, but we was looking at something in front of us. It would help out a lot.
Is there a service contract y'all have with them or is it just per, per incident with repairs?
So these, the, the SCBAs we currently have are brought, were brought under a previous, previous chief. So I'm not sure exactly what, what the service contract they had at the beginning. I'm sure there was. But there was nothing after that. The actual, the vendor that actually sold air packs no longer sells that, that style air pack. So we actually had to go out and find other folks to actually repair our, our SCBAs for us. I can tell you, usually we have anywhere from five to ten SCBAs that, that go get repaired probably every about three. every about three months. And usually those repairs per SCBA could be anywhere from a hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. It just depends on what actually broke on the SCBA. So it's, it's, it just depends on what's breaking on those.
Chief, do you guys wear those same items during training as well?
Absolutely. So not only inside fires, th- these guys are in these air packs a pretty good bit. You know, hazmats, you know, gas calls, things like that. They protect our respiratory tract. So anytime we have a, a chance to, to keep our respiratory tract safe, that's what we're gonna do.
Is there anyone else on this item? If not, pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Thank you, chief folks.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Resolution number seven, that item has been requested to be removed?
Make a motion to remove?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number eight?
A resolution approving the purchase of site furniture, including eight picnic tables, twelve park benches, and thirteen waste receptacles from Sightscapes in the amount of forty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. The purchase will be made with funds in project three-two-two-zero-three, Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Project, Mooney Avenue Park Improvement, Phase Two, Charles Barsher.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This, as the agenda item states, is part of our redevelopment project for Mooney Avenue Park. We solicited quotes from five different large vendors. We had two respond that said they could not meet our specifications and two respond with quotes. The lowest responsive quote was from Sightscapes in the amount of forty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. The other quote was from Victor Stanley for sixty-seven thousand, four sixty-two. We're asking the council to approve the low quote. Once the council approves this, we'll, we'll get approval from the state. I'm in the process of getting that approval now. And once we have the council approval and the state approval, we'll be able to make the purchase.
Charles, do you have the actual breakdown per, per picnic table?
Yes. Bear with me one second. So on the Sightscapes quote, your standard bench that has a back running at eleven hundred, forty-five dollars each. We also have benches that are backless. Those are nine eighty-five each. The waste receptacles are eight seventy-five each. And then we're looking at two different types of picnic table. Both have six-foot tables. The one with six-foot benches, which are attached, it's freestanding. Those are twenty-six fifty each. I'm sorry, twenty, twenty-nine hundred each. And then there's a six-foot table with four-foot benches, which is wheelchair accessible. And these are some photographs that were attached. Those were twenty-six fifty each. Freight is just under twenty-five hundred dollars for the order. It's thirty-three items. That works out to about fifteen hundred dollars per item. And these prices are fairly comparable. Victor Stanley is the vendor that we've typically used. The steel, the nice thick steel slatted benches that you see throughout downtown in our parks, the similar waste receptacles, those typically run, the benches typically run around a thousand to twelve hundred dollars, and the waste receptacles are around a thousand dollars. So these, these prices are comparable in some ways better than Victor Stanley's on items we typically get. The picnic tables are significantly cheaper, to the tune of almost half the price.
And if this is approved, what is the turnaround time on these items?
The lead time right now is, is reported to be twelve to fourteen weeks. That was when we got the quote. So we'll obviously follow up with the vendor and confirm that. But we're trying to get these as quickly as possible. There's definitely a need in the park.
The reason why I was asking, we have several tables that, over at MLK that need to be replaced. And I was trying to see if the funds were available, we could pull it into there to lump it in with this sale.
So one of the things we'll be able to do, if the council approves this purchase, is, and, and the state approves the purchase, the state funder approves this purchase, is we'll be able to piggyback off of this quote. I've talked with Janet in purchasing, and she agrees that as long as Recreation is willing to spend the same amount per item and Sightscapes is willing to, to maintain that pricing, we'll be able to do that. So that's, that's the plan. We had looked at potentially trying to do a big order for all the parks. That would have required an RFP process, which would have ended more time on the whole process. This was the quickest, most efficient way to, to get quotes and to move forward.
Anyone else from the public on this item?
I'm just wanting to know the material on all of that, of the, are they coated, Charles?
Yes. It's, they're all steel.
Are they all steel, but they're coated?
They're powder coated, correct.
They have a, what type of coating, you know?
It's a, it's a powder coating, powder painted coating, a powder coating, which is typical of-
Okay, is it, is, because they got a, a lot of different, like a rubbery coating? Is it a rubbery coating or?
This one is gonna be more of a matte finish. It's a bronze color. So it's, it's sort of like a shiny brown color. It's not gonna be an enamel coat like you see on some lower-cost picnic tables. This is a heavier gauge steel. It's powder coated, industry standard for powder coating. Very similar to what we do with the playground equipment. Playground equipment is also a powder coating.
Okay. I was just wondering, some of them are powder, you know, you said powder coated. I've never heard of that before, but there's, there's a couple of different ways that they make these benches, I guess, and, you know.
Yes. Okay.
Councilman Wells, quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
Any of these tables gonna be, I know majority of them probably be standalone out in the park, but will any one of these be placed up under the old basketball court where they just done their playground equipment? Will any of this go up under there, well?
I don't know. And I thank you for asking that question because it's been four years that I've been asking for table and benches to be in the park. The dog park, ten benches. The dog park, nine garbage can. The dog park, two swimming pools. A faucet for a dog to get water in the pool, a faucet for a dog to drink water at the park, a dog park. And for four years, I've been asking for this. And this is what the public don't understand. Grant money is not always good. And I see when grant money come out, and Mr. Daniel Field said this, blacks got to wait on grant money. Look how long the state got to go approve this. We gonna vote on it tonight, but the state have to approve of it. But when it come to Z Merritt Park, it's amazing how we do grant money when it come to those park. This year in our budget, we just proved two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a park. And this grant money, I'm not gonna keep getting grant money because I have to go through so much to get anything when I'm trying to get something in the park. We got new playground equipment under the old basketball court. Everything got to be approved through the state. And the summer over with, Charles, you contacted me several times. You wanted to open it up for Memorial Day, I think, but nowhere for the parents to sit. You wanted to open it up for the Fourth of July, nowhere for the parents to sit. And I want all you all to pass by Mooney Park and pass by Cape Park. You want my kids to play with a ten-foot fence in Mooney Park, but Cape Park got a four fence, a four-foot fence, look presentable for kids. A ten-foot fence, it remind me of the jail. And that's what I kept crying about. I do not want the playground open because my kids, they most likely gonna go to jail before the kids in Cape Park. This grant money is too much trouble when it come to black parks. The grant money should be for everybody, but I see we got a habit. And you know why we get the grant money? Because our area is more qualified to get it. Off the backs are black females with kids. Those the criterias when we getting grant money. And I know these are things that they don't be want me to say, but I can't keep sitting up here being quiet because guess what? None of y'all gonna go to the park. But at least y'all can pass by the park and see how we got a brand new park. And look at all the clay right now where all the new equipment at because it haven't been cleaned. You know, these are the things that I talk about. These are the things that we go through. Charles, you know how many times I called you, emails and stuff. Now you just told me how many more weeks before this here come in?
It's twelve to fourteen weeks, according to the-
Twelve to fourteen weeks. So guess what? I have to get my people in District Three prepared for next summer. We went a whole summer, couldn't do nothing in the park. And I know it was hot. That's why I never push you or asking you about getting anything done. Well, Charles, what about this? What about that? I know it's hot. So I never look for no contractors to do anything out in the park. But guess what? It's about to get cool now. This park don't need to look like that next year. It don't, you know? And I always wanted a safe park. I asked about the cameras. Everything I asked for, you know, somehow when I ask for something, other people ask too. And which that's a good thing. I want everybody in every park to be safe. And I'm saying this here, I'm not promised to be up here another year. God, no, four years. But damn, Charles, you gonna have to do a better job. And if you can't do the job, tell me who I need to talk to. Ms. Lacy, we talked about these here bleachers. That's like the bleachers we got on the basketball court. We know it's not safe. If three kids run into it right now, that's a lawsuit. Why we not trying to protect our kids? They have, we have to do a better job, not just me as a whole. Thank you so much, Mr. President. Just like he asking, we know the conditions of the old bleachers in Martin Luther King Park. Don't sit there and say we see it. If something wrong with it, take it out. We know the condition of the bleachers in Z Merritt Park. One thing about it, in Z Merritt Park, the councilmen don't have to ask for nothing. We gonna take care of it. We gonna take care of it. That's how I wish we can do with Mooney Park, Jackson Park, Martin Luther King Park. We say, let's just take care of it because none of us gonna play in the park. It's about the kids and their parents. That's who it's about. Thank you.
Councilman Andrews, to your question, we are planning to put six of the backless benches on the basketball court for the reason that Councilman Wells highlighted, that we've had bleachers that were not supposed to be on the court, that were brought onto the court. They do pose a safety hazard. So we're gonna put the backless benches on the very perimeter. That will give enough space between the court and the bench. So if somebody gets tripped or falls down or whatever, they're not gonna collide with aluminum bleachers. We also are planning, I believe it's two benches right off of the playground. There will be two around the eventual walking trail, and there are gonna be two by the eventual gazebo. So that's, that's the twelve in total. There was a graphic attached to the agenda for anyone at home that wants to look this up. They chose the current master plan. Everything highlighted in that image is being funded by the grant and city match. It's to the tune of about five hundred thousand dollars. It is a major redevelopment of the park, and this is actually the fourth iteration of this design. There were some challenges that we ran into after the grant application was submitted. There's been a lot of work. I put a lot of personal work into moving this project forward. Grants don't always move quickly, and this was an anomaly in the sense that for about two years, our application sat in limbo during the pandemic. But, but since we've gotten the green light for things, we're moving as quickly as possible. The new fence for the playground should be delivered to the contractor around the end of this month, and we're hoping that we can set up the installation of that end of the month, first week of September. And then we'll be able to open the playground without the appearance of that, the chain link fence.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions on this item? Anyone else from the council? Pleasure of the council. I make a motion to approve? Second.
Excuse me. Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles.
Resolution number nine?
A discussion of a change to the city charter for the election of the police chief. Councilman Wells?
Thank you. Pretty much what's going on, the Charter Review Committee, they met for about twenty-four weeks, if not longer. And what we have to do, I think is every ten years, am I right, Ms. Lacy, that we supposed to look at the charter and see what can be changed and what can't be changed?
That's a good recommendation. It's not a requirement, but that's kind of a best practice.
Okay. So we did this here during the COVID time. And what took place, we never pushed it or never said anything. I brought it up several times, but what I'm looking at and what I see, that Andre, you might can explain it a little better than me. This my first time doing something like this, but I definitely wanna thank President Kip for even putting it on the agenda. And I'm gonna tell you all now that it's touching. A lot gonna be said, a lot gonna take place, but I definitely wanted, the councilman gonna have to talk more about it because Ms. Gonzalez, she put something out, and I like what she put out, to get an input. And that's what this all about. It's not gonna take place. We're not gonna even vote on it tonight. But this something that we talking about, that we need to talk about as a councilman. But definitely wanna hear from the public what all they have to say and they input on it because this something that you all now can get a chance to vote on if it's passed. Thank you, Mr. Andre.
Councilman, just to speak briefly about the process. So the city council can propose a change to the charter. And that would be done by an ordinance of, of the council that would make a proposal to hold an election that would change the charter to provide for an elected police chief. As of now, the police chief is appointed by the mayor, subject to confirmation by the council. So if the council proposes to change that, you would just prepare an ordinance. Now, it would be a lot of detail to work out to what that means to have a police chief elected. But you would basically pass an ordinance, have a call for an election of the citizens of Hammond, and the citizens of Hammond would vote whether they were in favor of that or not in favor of it. If they're in favor of it, then the charter is changed. We would typically put in there an effective date of the change in the ordinance, and that would be the effective date of the change if it's approved by the voters. That would be held at a regularly scheduled election. The state holds elections at various times of the year, and there are deadlines to submit matters to go on those ballots during those elections.
Just so I can point, since we're referring to the Charter Review Committee, I just wanted to make sure that we all, remind us all, and I'm sure every one of us looked at it, but their report had nine proposed amendments, which were all unanimous as proposals. Then there were recommendations, were eight recommendations where they didn't think it required a charter change, but could, there's something else that could be done. And then three items agreed warranted further discussion, but they couldn't come to a consensus or exceeded their ability. And the idea of the police chief, the only point in this Charter Review Committee report is under that recommendations to discuss further, which is what we're doing, was there, that what they reported to us is accountability of the police chief, increasing accountability to public particularly, came up regarding police chief. So that was their public input. And ideas were discussed, such as election versus appointment of the police chief, recall by public petition, et cetera. So I just wanted to be clear that the Charter Review Committee did not say, put this on the ballot. It was something that was warranting more discussion, which is what we're doing tonight. It was something that was warranting more discussion, which is what we're doing tonight.
Anybody else up here had a comment before we move to public discussion?
Uh, I didn't think the Charter Review said put it on the ballot, uh, I mean on the agenda. I had asked to put it on the agenda.
No, I'm aware, I'm just.
Okay.
You've mentioned the Charter Review.
But let me talk, let me talk. Okay, yeah, I did mention them, but I'm saying, yeah, I put it on the agenda. And President Kip approved for me to put it on the agenda and it's for a discussion. And this was going on. They don't have issues. We have the issues. My community have issues. Kids are killing kids. The police department, Hammond Police Department, went in a house and a victim was shot. We've been putting these here, everything they recommend, everything the Charter Review recommend, we've been putting it off. We can't keep covering it up. Just in case you all don't know, and this what I'm afraid of, all the councilmen not afraid of. I'm afraid the police gonna come to my house next and shoot me, shoot my wife, shoot my kids. That's what I'm afraid of. Every day I'm scared. This the first time I ever saw the chief since that incident took place. If he was voted by the people, I promise you he'd have been stood up and talked to us. That's what my concern is about. That's why I put it on the agenda because guess what? It need to be discussed. If this wouldn't have been on the agenda, you wouldn't have never saw him. He still would have been hiding or going to the coffee shop. We all don't go to the coffee shop. That's the issue. It need to be discussed. You keep putting it off, you keep putting it off, it gonna erupt. You got hot August night, you got southeastern football games. See, it ain't gonna keep taking place in District Three. It's gonna switch. So let's not keep putting it off, it's for a discussion. The people have something to say. Ms. Gonzalez? I don't know what's going on. Your kid ain't never got to worry about the police. My kids got to worry about the police every day. Mr. Mayor, your kids ain't never got to worry about the police. My kids got to worry about the police every day. The mayor appointed chief. The chief lied from the beginning. It was covered up. I voted for him, but I didn't have all the proof what took place. Now, look at us again. We dealing with a hot topic, a hot item, and what we gonna do? Cover it up? You can't keep pushing everything up under the rug. We afraid. You stay around southeastern. I stay where the drugs are. I stay where the gun violence at. I'm afraid. You don't have to be afraid. I wish I can sit up here and act like you and look like you and don't be scared. I'm scared. Not for me, but for the community. We afraid. Every time we get in our car, now we sitting past a vehicle now, they can come in your house and shoot you. If the chief was elected by the people, I guarantee you we won't be doing no in-house investigation. But I don't fault the chief for protecting family members. I will protect my family members, but it's not right for the citizens. That's why we need to discuss it. I'm not saying we gonna have to vote on him. Independence vote on the chief. Amet vote on the chief. Punchitula vote on the chief. Hammond not voting on the chief. Tell me why? We see what need to be changed there because guess what? Our grandkids ain't gonna make it in Hammond, the way things going. The people look like me, who's dying, who's getting killed. So that's why I'm concerned. Ma'am, I wish I could feel like you, but I don't. That's why we need to discuss it, that's why we need to talk about it. Thank you.
Come on, Thayer.
I'd just like to add to what Divine is saying. You know, it is, it's just getting to the point now, it's not just black and white. You know, the more has been on the black side, they killing the people, you know? And I have neighbors that are, you know, Afro-Americans and, and they are scared. Can't blame them. You know, uh, I live in a, in a mixed neighborhood personally. And every time something happens, you know, the people in the neighborhood, they ask me, Sal, what, what, what's gonna, what's gonna happen? I'm going like, hey, call the police. I don't know, you know, what else can I tell them? But you know, in the, the west side of Hammond has never been really patrolled that much. I think the city council should, uh, maybe investigate a little bit more about the police department, what, what routes they taking. You know, I see thousands of, uh, police cars going through the city of Hammond. Take Railroad Avenue all the way back to right here. But I never hardly see any police patrolling. Alada, crap is on the road. I don't see them traveling to Baptist. The only time I see them when they have an emergency. Kinda late then. We laid out, somebody laid out, shot, stabbed or whatever, kinda late for that individual. But you know, uh, the council has a lot on their shoulders. The mayor only could do so much. Takes the council to put it together and present it to the mayor. You know, he could, he could recommend, but if y'all don't put it all together and say, hey, this is what we need for the citizens of Hammond, the citizens. That's the, just the city of Hammond, the, the inside is not whole Hammond. Yeah, they got all the business places here, yeah, we all come spend our money here. I spend my money here, I don't go spend in Baptist, but I don't see no patrolmen passing in Hammond on my, on my street. I don't see no cars going down there checking. The only time they come is when I call them. Well, hell, I don't, by that time, I don't need them, kinda late then. So y'all, as a city council, y'all need to make a recommendation to the, either the chief of police, which I know we have an issues because he is appointed. And when you appoint the person, then the, the mayor has, you know, he has kinda control of what's happening. And the chief can't do anything if the mayor don't tell him to do it. You know, New Orleans, you have down in New Orleans, they fuss and fight all the time, the mayor and the chief. Now they got rid of two or three of them, now they got a lady chief down there, you know? So, uh, and you even got a lady sheriff now, not sheriff, yeah, yeah. So, uh, I don't have the answers, but I know it's not getting any better. And I feel for Divine, I do. I know, I have kids. I'm talking about six-year-olds, four-year-olds, when I pass through there, they go, they, they waving at me. But yet I see no police patrolling, none, none. So I don't know who needs to get on, but if somebody need to get on to the police department and get them to stop patrolling those neighborhoods, okay? I don't know, do you, you have to see the police in your neighborhood? Do you have them in your neighborhood?
Police can't be everywhere.
I didn't ask you that, Steve, I just asked you, do you see them in your neighborhood?
See them all over Hammond.
I'm not going there. I'm, I'm gonna direct this, I'm gonna direct this to the mayor. It's up to the mayor to take care and tell the police chief what to do. It's up to the mayor with the support of the city council. If y'all don't give him no help, y'all, you know, you can't blame him all the time. You can blame him some, but he's human like everybody else. You know, he and I had disagreements, but also speak the truth. So I'm asking y'all at the city council to present something to the mayor involving the chief. Thank y'all.
Good evening, my name is Vic Couillon, 802 Rucane, Hammond, Louisiana. I'm, I'm an old man, I'll say that when I address you. I live on Rucane in Villa West. Three years ago, someone was murdered on my street. I very much respect what Councilman Wells has said, but it's not just your neighborhood where we afraid. I'm afraid to go to Walmart, I'm afraid to walk to their parking lot. It's endemic in our nation today, unfortunately. It's not just in Hammond. We all need as citizens to start working, start telling our neighbors and people at church, let's cut out this violence, let's do something about this, the drugs that are being used and abused. And we can all do this, we can work together. To me, it's not black and white, we're all afraid, we all have to worry about our society. I will wanna say this, either electing or appointing a police chief is a delicate issue. There's something to be said for both sides of it. I will say this, on the side of appointing a police chief, all of you are politicians, whether you want to admit that you are or not, you are politicians. And by electing a police chief, there's one danger that can creep in there and that's corruption. For example, when all of you ran for office, you had to get money to run so you could put tacky signs out that, that, uh, trash up our city and little push cards that wind up and wherever. So let's say a donor gave you, Sam, $10,000 for you to run for police chief. Six months after he's elected, gets caught on the DWI. So he calls you and said, hey, Sam, I gave you $10,000. What you gonna do about my DWI? That's a danger that you have to think about and if you're gonna change this and it's, it's a very, there's both sides of the issue. But when you appointed, when you elect a police chief, you're adding another layer of bureaucracy in there. One more election. And also, I would hope that if you go to that system, and I know many cities do it, I've covered cities during my long journalism career, different, different communities. There's two sides to that. One is, we have to make sure that our, the people who elected are well informed. Just because someone's very popular, it doesn't mean they're gonna be a great police chief. They might be a wonderful person, great person, they go to church every Sunday, pray every day, but they don't know a whole lot about law enforcement. If you're going, I'm not lecturing you, but I'm just suggesting, if you're going to go to an elected police chief, you're gonna have to draw up some very rigid requirements. You can't just say, I don't want to be a police chief, I have a good many friends, but if I decide to run, I might get elected. I would not know what to do. So you're going to have to, to come up with some very rigid requirements and qualifications. One thing about mayoral appointment is the mayor can go through these things and you as a council have a final say. If you don't like who the mayor recommends, you, you don't have to vote for it. And it's a question I wanna ask, and I don't know that what the, the thing about this is, Andre, if the council would vote to put it to the voters, can the mayor veto that vote?
No.
Okay, I didn't know that's what I was interested in. So there's, 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 there's good things on both sides, there's two ways to look at this. I know of a community, I'm not going to name where they elect their police chief and they regret it. The man, again, was a pretty good man, but he's not been a very good police chief. Be careful, tread carefully, take, consider both sides of the issue. And I would hope that all of us can work together, forget color, let's work together to make everybody feel safe in our community. I thank you for putting yourself out there, for being the, the voice and the conscience of our community. I appreciate what you do. You, you've taken on a very serious responsibility and I congratulate you. Let's all work together. Thank you.
Hey, Vic, let me ask you a question. What would you do if your police chief was caught beating a guy in handcuffs on, on video?
If I were police chief, I would, I would go to the state police and I would have an official investigation done. I would call the FBI in, I would have authorities say, this is what, this is what is wrong. And if, if that person, if that police chief was wrong, I would hope he would be indicted. And that's. Thank you. That, that is among the things that are happening. But remember this, there's always two sides to a story and both sides need to be heard by responsible agencies such as state police and the FBI.
Christine Monastery, 208 Camellia Avenue. I'm glad Mr. Cubion, is that his name, brought that up because those things were done. Taxpayers paid a lot of money to have an investigation done. The last meeting, I believe, our mayor said, if they're wrong, they're wrong. That's a quote from you, Pete. And yet you know they're wrong and you did nothing. I believe the council has a fiduciary responsibility to us all to revisit that investigation and let the town know, let the city know every month at least about what's being done with the recommendations that we paid for. Now, having said that, I see both sides of having an elected chief and having an appointed chief. I weigh a little more heavily toward having an elected chief and here's my reasons why. I believe that if you elect a chief, it is my belief that it eliminates some of the politics. He's not gonna feel like he has to follow the administration's agenda and be fired for philosophical differences, as has happened in the not-so-distant past, right? I believe that if you have an elected chief, they would have to live within the city limits of Hammond. Our current chief does not. And there's, there's other things that go on, but I, I believe that they need to be elected. They need to be elected, we could get rid of him in four years. We've had this one for how long? And we can't get rid of him, we can't get rid of him. And we've asked the mayor, y'all have asked the mayor to please get rid of him and it's gotten worse. We went from beatings to bullets in the face, you know? And we have tremendous lawsuits from the Hammond Police Department. How much money is that costing us? Can somebody give me a number? Mr. Andre? How much money have we paid out in lawsuits just in the past three years? How much?
I, I can't give you a number.
I figured that, okay, thank you. Elect.
Robert Elizabeth, 48 Third Avenue. Only question I heard about somebody getting beat by handcuffs. In 2007, it was Chief Ryan DeBarr. I was handcuffed in Z Mary Park, face down. Vicky Cockham beat me handcuffed for no reason. Because I was driving my brother's truck. My brother was military, brand new truck, I'm black. The police say he followed me from Coleman Street to Price's right. Why you didn't stop me on Price, on Coleman if I was speeding? You get me to the store, you come to the truck, you act for the registration, insurance, that's in my brother's name. You pull my brother picture, man, I had braids, my brother don't look, look like, I signed a ticket in my name. I'm not Craig Williams. You grab me and slam me to the ground like I was lying to you about my name. My only escape was to get away and run to Z Mary Park, cause you, you tell me what you gonna do to me at that store? I go to the park, I waited on the police. When, when, when police come up, he handcuffed me. Vicky Cockham pull up, she jumped out of her car and went to beat me and stuff me. I'm handcuffed face down, man. You take me to jail, the police I got away from, he come up, I'm on the ground. He grabbed me with, by his forearm, he's a big police. Picked me up by his forearm, I said, man, you choking me, I can't breathe, you probably kill me. He said, oh, if I kill you, nigger, that's what he told me. That's his exact word. Went to Chief DeBarr. I had to go all the way to New Orleans to call the federal people. But they become, they told me to go file a report. You know who was over the turn of the fella? Kenny Cockham, that was Vicky's husband. He wouldn't take my, he wouldn't take my report. Went back to call the people, get them asked to go back up there again. So Chuck and Muse took it. Kenny wouldn't even take it. They beat me for no reason, man. This been going on, this ain't just started. It ain't started. Black person ain't gotta change. I, I be skipping, you know, when I, I walked home, when I see a police, y'all say patrolling your area wherever you stay, you know what they patrolling? in your area, wherever you stay, you know where they patrol in that? Red, now, it's Tuesday. You know where they at? Martin Luther King over that way, Brimwood Park, Moody Park? They looking for black peoples. They ain't gonna never control your area. Tuesday, Thursday, that's their main routes. We scared he'd stop. I'm not gonna stop in the dark, 'cause you called me. You don't know my name, but you want me to stop. What you, who you looking for? What's my name? Now, you come to my house and get me, but I'm not finna stop in the dark, because I don't know what you gonna do. Ain't nothing but white police. They come to my house the other night, looking for the wrong person. You got seven, eight, ain't nothing but whites. So who you looking for here? You beating on my door, about to kick my door in, I come to the door, show me your For what? Who is you looking for here? Now you got the wrong place. I stay on the dead-end road. I'm in the dark. You could've killed me. Ain't nobody back there but the old man next door to me. You could've killed me for no reason. Ain't none of black in the vicinity, nothing but whites. You got any, who I killed? Who, who you looking for? Ain't nobody killing nobody over here.
Thank you, Mr. Lenzin. Appreciate it. See, these the stories that you all never hear about. These the stories that don't go in the paper. This what take place in our communities, all the times. Tracking device, if you had it on the vehicle, if he was lying, we can go and look at the tracking device and see that the police was there or he wasn't there. That's the things that I've been asking for a long time. Thank you so much, Mr. Lenzin. These the stories that need to be told, and nobody want to hear, and first thing we say, he got a record. All of us got a record. So guess what? It's timeout. Thank you.
Once again, my name is Virgil Alden, Hammond, Louisiana. Yes, you're going. I studied criminal justice at Grandland State University, and there's a couple terms I want to bring to you guys' mindset. Conflict of interest, impartiality. Not only that, I would say, impartiality, you're supposed to be free and will-minded. You don't supposed to see the left, and you don't supposed to see the right. You're supposed to be, have tunnel vision. You don't supposed to be about a frat brother. It don't supposed to be about a Mason brother, anything of that sort. It don't supposed to be about a cousin, a family member. So when you make decisions and you hold public office, you take an oath. You ask us to turn around and give the pledge allegiance to the flag. But that stands for all of us. When you hold public office, the negatives come out when you run for office. The positives come out about who you are in your community. Here, we have a situation that's happened over and over again. I think it's imperative that you guys have this conversation still amongst yourselves. I think it's very imperative. It's very much important. It's a must that you make the ordinance, ordinance ASAP, that the public are able to make a vote, at least for the ordinance, to see if they really want to have an elected, elected officer, as elected, elected as chief. Because I think the public won't go wrong with who they may choose, and when it comes down to the criteria, we know that you may have to have a college education, maybe a couple years in law enforcement or something, clean background or whatever it takes to move up in the ranks. So the criteria wouldn't be hard to put in the qualification to be a chief. And not only that, I would like to add that if you are impartial, you look back at the civil rights movement, you back, look back at what black folks went through in order to get a right to vote. It's a constitutional right. I think that you should take that into consideration, not only just for blacks, but for whites as well, for the Mexicans, those who are considered the minorities. We all are citizens of this community. It's a lot different from the state, and it's a lot different from a federal standpoint. But give us this opportunity in our community. Each one of you guys represent our community right here in Hammond, within our city limits. Give us the chance and opportunity to put in office who we want to see in office, so that way we won't have to have favoritism, because it's the person that we elected. And if we do have a problem, we can go to that person, and the chief don't have to, I mean, the mayor don't have to be involved. I don't have to worry about if he's somebody's cousin, or he's somebody's frat brother, or he's a Mason brother or something, you know, alumni. We, we shouldn't have to put up with that. We should be able to look at the situation and say, "Hey, he's a black man, he's a white man, he's, she's a white woman," or whatever it may be, and that she's giving, or he's giving us the best of his ability to do his job. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dixit Moore. I live at 1403 Nasher Street. I live in the neighborhood where this shooting occurred, and like Councilman Will said, Miss Gonzalez doesn't know about telling your kids when the police stop you, call dead first, you know, because you don't want nothing to happen to them. I've been in the neighborhood 30 years. All my seniors have left, and I'm the oldest that been in the neighborhood now. And Councilman Will been doing a good job. We've been asking for speed bumps, slow down for kids. He put out the work and got those things for us. Before that, I used to have to stand out in my street and tell people to slow down, 'cause watch out for my kids. So I understand where everything's going on and what's happening. I've been a police officer. I know what's happening in the stations, how they treat us, black in the police department, you know, when you get arrested. So I'm all for voting in the chief instead of appointed the chief. Thank you.
I've got a couple answers for people who had came to the podium and asked questions. Number one, I need the, I think the city council should put in a resolution to change the charter and make it mandatory, or I guess mandatory, to be elected chief of police. I mean, I know now we have the chief, was it appointed by the mayor? And previously, we had the same problems that was being appointed. Someone asked about how much money was spent. Well, I'm, I'm, I don't know if the council's aware, but the first mayor, I mean, the first chief of police had been here for 20-some years, and he was relieved, and he sued the city of Hammond for 1.7 million dollars, and he won. And then we had another chief who was appointed by the mayor, and he was an FBI man, from what I'm aware of, and he was fired, because I think he didn't live in, in the city limits or whatever. I don't know exactly what it was, but he sued for $800,000. So that's 1.8, $800,000 that the city taxpayers had to pay. We didn't pay it? Who paid it?
The second, the second chief didn't win that lawsuit.
I beg your pardon?
The second chief did not win that lawsuit.
Oh, really?
Right.
Uh, well, maybe I was misinformed then. Was I? Okay. Well, if, if I was, I apologize. But the third issue was with the problem with the, the waste probe and waste management or whatever. That was another element that we had problems with. The city council never could come to heads or tails with it, and that was another 1.7 million dollars, 1.4, I believe, million per year. Is that correct, city council people? For five years, is that a five-year contract? So altogether, we looking at the taxpayers had to come out with around 3 to 4 million dollars within the last four, five years or whatever. I'm just passing this on from what I've heard. So if y'all have any, any answers to this, or if y'all could, you know, make a correction, please do so. But I, so I suggest that the city council make a resolution to change the charter in where we have an opportunity to elect a chief of police. Thank y'all.
Mr. Coudran, my question would be, after this, the next step in this process, if, if we decide to move forward, what would be the next step?
Next step would be to prepare an ordinance to be introduced.
Okay. And then once the ordinance, I know the public hearing, from the public hearing, the vote, then the next step after that, if it passes?
It's a final adoption, then you would, depending upon when that is. So the next available election would be in March of next year, and you'd have to submit something by November.
Of this year?
Of this year. Secretary of State to be on the ballot for March.
I just wanted to point out, Andre had a, a good email that you shared with Councilman Wells about the different things that a ordinance would, we would need to consider, which is, was a great kind of starting point for this conversation of, if you want the charter changed this year, or, or, sorry, this year or next year, pay and any benefits for the chief, term of office, how many terms they could serve, full authorities for hire and fire over departments, treated as department head or not, qualifications, residency require, effective date of ordinance. All of those, to my understanding, would need to be at least addressed. Some of those things should be fleshed out in the charter actual amendment that would need to be introduced and then voted on. Is that right?
Yes. I mean, the citizens need to know what an elected chief looks like. Are we gonna set the salary? Are we gonna set the benefits? Are we gonna give the chief autonomy or authority to handle his budget? Like, for example, purchase of vehicles. Does he have to come to the council every time he wants to spend more than $25,000, or is it gonna chief to have the authority of the budget? Hiring and firing, there are civil service laws that apply, but would the chief otherwise have the authority to hire and fire people in the department? Is there gonna be term limits? What would be the term of the police chief? So there's lots of things to consider. Qualifications for the office. The charter does have some fairly minimal qualifications for the chief. Are those still appropriate? Do you want to make those greater than what we have now since it's elected chief and not an appointed chief? So there are just lots of details to work out what an elected chief looks like. So to give some background, the reason why some communities have elected chiefs is because they're Lawrison Act communities, where the, where the state legislature created what the rules are for municipalities. And what they wanted to have is some general authority of the municipalities that, that's routine across the state. There's about 75% of cities and municipalities that have elected chiefs. Those like Hammond, though, that have charters, our citizens voted for a charter back in the 70s, and so those communities typically have appointed chiefs. Some Lawrison Act communities have voted to have appointed chiefs and not elected chiefs. Some city charter communities have elected chiefs, not appointed chiefs. So it really becomes what a community believes is best for its area. But there are still lots of questions to be worked out, because the citizens have to know exactly what an elected chief looks like, so they know what they're voting on.
So in other words, Andre, with that statement there being made, those parts of that mechanics need to be worked out first before an ordinance to be introduced along with that?
Well, the ordinance has to have, has to have all those questions answered, meaning, I mean, all those things that we've talked about, that I've alluded to. All of those questions need to be put up for a very specific conversation about each one of those things. You can put an ordinance on the table, but it could be, again, amended or discussed at, at council meetings, or you could have some consensus where you give me some direction on what to put in the ordinance. I will tell you, I'm somewhat uncomfortable just putting things out there in an ordinance without a lot of direction from the council.
The ordinance would replace, so this is the current ordinance for the police chief. So our wording is what is substituted into the council, and so we can't just say, "Bring it to the vote of the people for an elected police chief." One line. We have to actually specify qualifications, residency, all of those things that we just discussed. Those, those words need to be done.
The charter has three paragraphs with a subsection under number C, so all of that detail is gonna have to be in the ordinance.
Any other council member?
Uh, what, Ms. Wells, weren't you on the Charter Review Committee? Yes, could you please come up here and speak about it?
Tracy Washington Wells, 610 Mooney Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana. I was really gonna wait until you guys decided to put an ordinance together to speak. I had a chance to hear Councilwoman Gonzalez talk about the Charter Review Committee and the items that we recommended. The police chief being elected did come up. We had public input. Some people had pros and some people had cons. I think this is a great place for you all to start, considering the climate that we live in. Our charter, I like to equate it to a constitution, but one thing I will say and leave with you is, "Of the people, by the people, and for the people." Every one of you up here, with the exception of Mr. Coudran, Ms. Lisa, and Dr. Landrum, all of you are elected. At any given point, if we don't like what you do, you can be recalled by the vote of the people. Your position can be put up for a recall. As such, the police chief needs to be a position that can be recalled, if it's not of the people, by the people, and for the people. The purpose of our law enforcement agency, and let me be clear, I am not against the police. So I don't want to hear I said anything negative about the police department. I'm not calling for any defunding. Let me be clear, because words get switched. What I am saying is, they have an obligation to protect and serve everyone, regardless of race, regardless of gender, regardless of religion. We have a community made up of diverse people who need representation. The mayor, who is the mayor for the entire city, said, "The police chief is doing a great job." 50% of us do not agree. 50% agree. Mr. Coudran stood up and said he had an issue, and he doesn't see it as a black and white, and that is correct. But many of us, black mothers, have to have a different conversation with our children. We do. So I would put it on you to consider. Let us decide whether or not we want a police chief. Put it on the ballot. If it fails, it fails, but at least, at least we would have had a voice. So moving forward, whatever you all have to do to get something to Mr. Coudran, put an ordinance out there and let us decide. Let us decide. Thank you.
Anyone else up on the panel?
Uh, thank you. Once again, thank you so much. What I do suggest is, is like city court. City court have a budget, but city court still have to come before us to approve of it. DDD have a budget. They still have to come before us. And I'm saying that to say, Mr. Andre, it's nothing hard if you want to do it. And I know you probably in a, a, a uncomfortable position, but I'm gonna say this again, you have no worries. When the storm took place, when Ida took place, guess what they did? They hurried up over there and rushed and cut a tree for you to get out your subdivision. And our subdivision, we had to wait till the fire department come. And I'm saying that those little things, the same, and I'm talking, this, the mayor stated this now, so, uh, this come out the mayor mouth, this ain't come out my mouth. So the same little things that you all get, everybody in the city of Hammond deserve. I don't know if a lawsuit was gonna take place, so that's why they rushed and got you out, but guess what? I want them to rush to get my mom out. I want them to rush to get Ms. Bayle out. I want them to rush to get Ms. Susan out. Anybody in that situation. And, and I know, we can sit here, and I'm not gonna go back and forth with you, I would like for you to do your job. On Range Road, MC Moore Road, that family stayed back there for two days, and you know who cut the tree? Chris Ruffin them. All them got there in that community and... Chris Ruffin them, all them got there in that community and cut the tree. Guess what? The city wouldn't, the fire department didn't go back there. The police department didn't go back there. See, those are the little things that we see that y'all don't know nothing about. But guess what? It affect us every day. We tired. We tired. So if we keep putting it off, you can make it long drawn out past November if you want. We tired. We tired. Everybody stand up here and get their address. So everybody know where everybody stay. But don't nobody know where you stay? We tired. We can't keep getting beat and think we're gonna keep talking about it. We can't. It's something that the city councils can set out. The mayor stated. We make the rules. Why we not making the rules? We make the rules. It's a lot on Kelp. It's a lot on everybody. But you know what? We the ones feeling it. We feel it every day. Our peers putting us a lot of pressure on us. He said it. We've been elected to do a job, whether we like it or not. We have to do a job.
Andre, upon that email you sent referencing back to what Ms. Gonzalez said with some of those questions, I'll be following up with you with some of those questions on how I feel to move forward in that process so we can, again, put it out before the people. Reports, mayor?
We had two members of our community that just passed. Many know Bruce. It's Bruce from Mariners. LeBrec, he just passed recently. And also lifelong resident, Ms. Early in Dangerfield passed. Let's all keep them and their families in our prayers and hopefully they can get through this trying time.
Any council reports?
Everybody looking at me. I always have a report. These last two weeks, we haven't had no shooting in District Three. Nobody got killed, to my knowledge. Now, I don't know what's going on tonight, but that's a good thing that I can sit here and say that, 'cause we have a lot of issue. Ms. Lacy, thank you for everything that we asked for with the committee, the building permit office. They actually been cutting a lot of grass, so they doing a wonderful job. I just wanna say thank you on that. Thank you, President Kelp, for going at this here on this agenda. I wanna thank you for that. Mr. Mayor, thank you for what all you trying to do. And we're gonna have to get together on this part. It's falling behind. It's falling behind. And I appreciate everything that everyone showed up and got a chance to speak from their heart. And what's going on, a lot of people from the community in different areas, they truly scared to say something. They'll talk to me one-on-one. But when it's time to get in the public, they really scared because they don't want no police to stop them. They don't want no police to come by their house. So those issues that we really having. Thank you so much.
One other thing, who Lacy, on that list with the properties, do you have a copy of that list? I'm just, the mowing and things? Okay. I've submitted some, and I'm trying to see what they are in the process of that. All right, any other council reports?
I'm concerned about the Hollygarden Cemetery. I have several loved ones in there. And in the proceeding of y'all doing whatever y'all guidelines for the upkeep of the cemetery, it is very hard, and I have a serious issue with that. It's never cut or anything, so it's in real bad shape. So I'd like to know what, you know, who, whoever have to do anything going on.
Parks and grounds cuts the park. And generally, the hardest places to cut are the cemeteries, and it's a weed-eating thing. So I'm not quite sure when's the last time they cut. We can check on that, but I'm sure they're cutting that cemetery. Because Mr. Jackson handles that.
And he said he had to call someone else about doing the cut.
Or lease.
Yes, but like I said, when we purchased the plot, that's paid in, they have to say they gonna upkeep it. And it's been very horrible the last few years. And my family is getting on me because they not keeping it up. They going out there, I cut them most of the time. But they going out there and they having a problem with people from out of town coming in, saying it's very horrible. We done paid for this, and it's not being kept up. We just keep getting run around. Oh, we don't have the people to cut it. Well, pay whoever you need to pay or whatever you need to do. It need to be kept up. It's in the city limit. We done paid for it. It need to be kept up, just that simple. And I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Meeting adjourned.